Thank you. Good evening. And good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Norwood Planning Board Meeting, Monday night. It is January the 25th at 7:00 PM. And we have a virtual meeting again this week. And we'll start off the meeting with the reading, the review of the Planning Board Minutes from January 11th, 2021 at 7 o'clock. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Is there any question? Is there any issues? Okay, that being said, there be no issues. Would someone please make a motion to accept the minutes as filed? Motion? And a second? Joe, is that a motion on your part?
I have to abstain. I was not here last time.
Okay. Brian?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One abstention?
One abstention? Brian?
Aye.
Ernie?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I. So we have it. Five, zero, and one. Okay. Thank you. Want to put the agenda up? Patrick?
Okay.
The hour of 7:01 has been upon us. We have a minor site plan approval signed for the juice bar at 20 Broadway Unit A. Osceali Astiario? This is Ona.
Yes, that's me.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Want to tell us a little about your business and you're going in where Spot was?
Yes, that's correct. I own a juice bar already on South Norwood. So this will be my second location. Basically, we're using everything that is there already. We're just replacing the the fabric. Everything will stay the same, and I'm going to replace it with my logo.
Unfortunately, I'm not familiar with your location in South Norwood. But doesn't mean anything by that.
You can stop by, have some.
I promise I will. Can you tell me a little about the juice bar?
Yes, so the juice bar, we serve smoothies, green juices, acai bowls, sandwiches. We're, we've been there for three years now with the juice bar. Prior to that, it was a Brazilian market.
What is the address on that, please?
1199 Washington Street.
This is a free plug. Okay. All right, and you're going to do the same process up on Broadway?
That's correct.
Okay. Patrick, have you had a chance to look at the sign and the design and the?
Yep. So yeah, so as Marcella said, it's just a, it's a black umbrella fabric. The logo or the graphic itself, I believe is 44 inches by 45 inches, which is the double check. It comes out to
Yeah, 44 by 45, yeah.
Yeah, it comes out to a little bit under 14 square feet per measurable graphic for each sign. So we got a primary sign, we have two secondary signs showing the different the front view and then each different entrance as well as side view. So it is compliant with our bylaws for primary, for a primary sign as well as secondary signs within the, within a business district, being under 30 square feet for the primary and being under 15 square feet for secondaries. So it's compliant with our, with our bylaws. So I recommend approval.
Okay, that being said, make a motion to accept and approve. Mr. Shan, so moved? Second? Mr. Henchy, thank you. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous? Okay, shall we say, Mr. May, I'm sorry. Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
Mr. Pachakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shan?
Aye.
Mr. Henchy?
Aye.
And the chairman is an aye, five, zero. Oscealo, thank you, Marcella. Excuse me. Please accept my apology. Welcome to the uptown.
Thank you. I'm excited. I can't wait.
Catch up with Patrick tomorrow, and he'll take care of the details.
All right. Thank you so much, everybody. Have a wonderful night.
You do the same.
Thanks.
Okay, it's 7:05. We have a public hearing. Article for February 4th, special town meetings, zoning bylaw amendment, section 4.4 landscaping. Paul, do you want to update us on that, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening. We're going to have our public hearings for six zoning amendments tonight. As the board knows, we've been working on these for, in some cases, a couple of years. We already had a public hearing in October when we believed that we would have a November 11th special town meeting. As you know, that was postponed, and we are now planning for a February 4th virtual town meeting. So tonight I'm going to, Pat and I are both going to explain the zoning amendments and answer any questions from the board and the audience. The first article that we're going to discuss is the amendments to section 6.4 of the zoning bylaw, the landscaping and buffering section. This, these proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw will not be imposed retroactively on the existing businesses in town. Instead, as new commercial development has to comply with these regulations when they're opening up, they will be affected. Redevelopments of existing businesses, if they trigger a site plan approval or a special permit, those will be affected. Commercial building additions of certain sizes will be impacted by these changes. And changes of use to commercial buildings that may trigger a planning board site plan review or a special permit, those will trigger these new landscape requirements. As the board knows, over the last few years, we've seen a variety of site plans come in. And oftentimes, those plans don't seem to have adequate landscaping. This was something that former board member Debbie Homewood made us aware of on virtually every project, that she felt that we really could do better, that we needed more landscaping. And, and I agreed with her and the board agreed with her. So I drafted these changes to this section of the zoning bylaw. These will hopefully help to improve the appearance of commercial properties in town. It will require a wider range of landscape plantings, a wider variety, promote seasonal flowers and perennials. It will help to reduce impervious services such as parking lots, and it will promote ecological diversity. The, there will be other positive benefits from this zoning bylaw amendment. This will help to reduce the impacts of climate change. It will help to address the urban heat sink effect. It'll help to sequester carbon, increase groundwater recharge, and increase the value of commercial properties because we believe they'll look more attractive. Right now, our zoning bylaw only allows evergreen shrubs and trees. And this was brought to my attention a few years ago when we were working with the McDonald's up on Everett Street for redeveloping that, that restaurant. And I had asked the landscape architect, they had over 100 of these inkberry bushes, small evergreen bushes with berries. And I said, you know, can't you put something else in there besides 100 of these? Why don't you put in something nice flowering, you know, forsythia, lilacs, things that we love to see every spring? And as the landscape architect pointed out to me, he said, Paul, your bylaw doesn't allow for that. And when I went back and read and reread it, I arrived at that conclusion. And I, it didn't really make sense to me. So what this bylaw amendment will allow for flowering shrubs and seasonal plantings, the existing minimum requirements for trees and shrubs, we believe are inadequate, and this will promote better landscaping. Require that mix of perennials and flowers will increase the amount of land required for landscaping. Right now, the bylaw requires that 2% of a parking lot be set aside for landscaping. This amendment will increase that to 5%. It will also increase the number of trees that are required along property boundaries and within the landscape areas of parking lots from one tree every 40 feet to one tree every 30 feet. It will make it clear that native species need to be planted, that are drought tolerant and are insect resistant and disease resistant. These are things that aren't spelled out clearly in the bylaw right now, and this amendment helps to clarify that. It'll help improve the, the way these commercial properties look. It'll improve the environment, and it'll create some more green space. I'd be glad to answer any questions about the, the bylaw amendment. Yes, sir. Joe?
I, I think Mr. Pearl was talking, but I couldn't hear him. I don't know if he had his speaker on.
I, I was calling him. Mr. Pachakowski had his hand up, but he's also got his muted.
There we go. Just two things. One first, Mr. Chairman, with this as a public hearing, do we have to reread notices? Or are we good from our last go around with the public hearings?
Did you get a response from town council regarding these, where the meeting was dissolved?
Yeah, he said that because the, the November 11th meeting was dissolved, he advised us to, to hold these hearings. And I think Mr. Pachakowski raises a good point. If the, if the public hearing notice is not going to be read aloud into the record, at least the board should reference the hearing notice and take a vote to waive the reading of it. But either way, I think Ernie's right. We need to mention the hearing notice.
Okay, and who is the clerk that would read this?
Me.
Do you want to make a motion to waive the reading and accept it into the minutes?
Make a motion to waive the public hearing notice reading and accept it into the minutes?
I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I don't think we need to do a roll. Everybody understands where we are.
So my, my second question is to Paul about the, about the bylaw. Paul, just, I, I'm pretty sure I know the answer, and the answer is yes. But as we look forward going down the road on town meeting, where the bigger nut that night is going to be the Route 1 overlay district, where that's going to be an overlay district, and actually, the hospital, I believe, is also going to be an overlay district, which have their own set of bylaws. These landscape plans are referenced in those bylaws, correct? So someone who does business on Route 1 going forward, they have to abide by these law, these bylaws as well, correct? Even other overlay districts?
Yeah, so the Boston Providence Highway District, the new Route 1 district, is, is not an overlay. It's a straight zoning district.
Straight zoning, okay, I'm sorry.
The medical services for the hospital, that is an overlay. And the Boston Providence Highway bylaw does involve overlay districts because the mixed-use overlay district from downtown is going to be superimposed in those area.
That's what I was thinking, the housing aspect of that.
Yeah, so in response to the question about when will these regulations be triggered, because of kind of a strange quirk to the State Zoning Act, Chapter 48, any projects that came in after this public hearing notice was in the newspaper will need to be subject to these new zoning amendments. So Pat and I ran these public hearing notices in the newspaper, starting, I think, in the end of December. And that date of when the, the notice went into the paper is the effective date of when these bylaws will come into play, if they're approved by town meeting members and if they're approved by the Attorney General.
So anything, any, even if you're in Route 1 and you're, or you're, if you come in with a new project, you're subject to these lands?
Yep, yep, and there are some projects that are waiting for town meeting to happen, and then they're going to file, and they will be subject to these. There's an open lot storage, a couple of them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on that? So that being said, regarding article, section 6.4 on the landscaping screening. Well, we've already, we've already approved that as a board, right?
Yeah, but based on what council said, I think we're basically going to redo everything. So I'd recommend that the board take a vote to support the article and then take a vote to close this public hearing.
Okay. That being said, can I get a motion to accept? And a second to accept the article? Joe?
Just a question. Do we close the, do we close first and then take the vote?
I'm sorry, Joe. Yes, please.
Do we close the public hearing first and then do the vote?
Yes.
I think either way works.
Okay. A motion to close the public hearing?
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rob. A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous for the roll. Mr. Shan?
Aye.
Mr. Hatchey?
Aye.
Mr. Pachakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye as well, five, zero. Okay, that being said, to close the hearing, now, motion to accept the landscape amendment. I have a motion?
A motion to support that at town meeting?
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Mr. Hatchey?
Aye.
Mr. Shan?
Aye.
Mr. Pachakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
And the chairman's an aye, five, zero. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, the next public hearing is for an article for February 4th, 2021, special town meeting. Zoning bylaw amendments to section 3.1.5 in Table D, parentheses, five, closed parentheses, restaurants with drive-in, drive-through are similar service subject to section 7.3. And section 7.3, drive-through windows. Okay. Mr. Hal Kiotis?
Would the clerk like to read that hearing notice or have the board waive it?
Rob?
Make a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing notice.
And a second out there?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This article proposes to amend section 3.1.5 of the Table of Use Regulations. It will allow for drive-through windows in the general business district. Pat and I became aware last year that while we allow drive-through windows in most of the commercial business districts, we, we currently don't allow them in the general business district. The G zone, the GB district is one of the largest commercial zoning districts in the town. And we thought that it made sense to include allowing drive-throughs in the general business zone. As we know, drive-throughs can be convenient, they can save time, they're popular with people, and they're easier for people that have mobility issues, seniors and people that have, have trouble getting around. Drive-throughs are more convenient for them. They're currently allowed by special permit from the planning board under section 7.3 in the, in the zoning bylaw. And as I mentioned, that they're allowed in manufacturing, planned mixed-use development, limited manufacturing, highway business district currently. This amendment would allow for them in the general business zone. When we were going into the section of the zoning bylaw and analyzing it last year when we were getting our work ready for town meeting, most of us read that section of the zoning bylaw over a couple of times, section 7.3. And it wasn't really clear what it was saying. And, and after discussion and reading it again, we realized that what this section of the bylaw is trying to say is that it can only have one drive-through ordering window and one pickup window per building. And so we added some language to clarify that. That'll make it clear. We also, based on the board's experience with an application for a drive-through window that was long and did not have any way out once somebody entered the drive-through lane. This particular case you're familiar with was 270-foot-long drive-through lane with no way out. Once you're committed, you can't get out till you get through the end. So we thought as a design requirement, it would be much better to require an escape lane or bailout lane. So we added that into this, this section of the zoning bylaw. I think that once, that with these amendments that we're proposing, it makes the zoning requirements for drive-throughs clearer to everybody involved, will be more convenient because though we'll have a way to get out in the event that someone enters the drive-through lane and changes their mind and needs to go. And it will be more convenient for a wider range of people because we'll open up the general business district to these drive-throughs. That's all I have for this particular amendment, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from board members? Okay, not seeing any questions. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved?
Thank you, Mr. Shan. And may I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bamber. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous? For the record, Mr. Henchy, Hatchey, excuse me.
Aye.
Mr. Shan?
Aye.
Mr. Pachakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
And the chairman's an aye, five, zero. Close the hearing. Now, in regard to the accepting the motion will have a motion to accept. Mr. Shan?
A motion to make a positive recommendation to town meeting on this article.
And a second. Anyone?
Second.
Hatchey, thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous, five, zero. Mr. Shan?
Yes, aye.
Aye.
Mr. Hatchey?
Aye.
Pachakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
And the chairman is an aye, five, zero. Thank you. Okay. The next public hearing, 7:25 has come. And it's for an article for the February 4th, 2021, special town meeting, adoption of the new zoning map.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt for one second?
Yes, sir.
On these public hearings, I noticed a couple other people online. I didn't know if they, we really never asked if there was any public input. I don't know if these people online are here for a specific article or not. There's a John, John Pauley is Suzie King.
Okay.
I believe they are here for an agenda items that are going to be coming later tonight.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, that's, thank you, Ernie. Okay. Mr. Clark, you want to make a motion to waive the reading of the notice?
Make a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing notice?
Okay.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. So let's open up the public hearing regarding the adoption of the new zoning map. Mr. Al Kiotis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are, we're excited about this zoning amendment. We've actually been working on this for, for three years, working with the engineering department and a consultant, CAI, who helped to develop this new map. And Pat played a big role in also designing the map and, and working through the colors and the patching so that it was a, a map that would be clear and easier to read. This is a next-generation zoning map. It's a digital computer-based map. It's obviously color. And what's really hard to see at this level is that the base layer of the map are the town's property boundaries. So it has a parcel-based layer. As you know, our current zoning map is paper, black and white, pen and ink, old-fashioned kind of map, and it's really hard to read. And we have trouble because the property lines aren't shown on the current zoning map. It's sometimes hard to identify what zoning district a piece of property is in. When we get a call from a resident asking about a piece of property or what can be done with it, the very first step in that process is to determine what zoning district that property is located in. And it, it oftentimes takes, you know, 15 minutes with the current zoning map to figure out just where the zoning district line falls within a particular piece of property. So we think that this map is going to be very helpful to us, make it easier and more efficient for us to do our work. And it's also going to be a key component to the town's geographic information system. Over the last 10 or 15 years, most towns have already done this and updated their maps. I, I did, on my last job, I updated the zoning map there about 10 years ago. So it's, it was high time for Noah to do the same. Because this is part of our geographic information system, we'll be able to overlay other data layers on top of the zoning map. So if somebody calls and wants to know if their property is in the FEMA flood zone, we can throw on the flood zone layer, see right through where the property lines are, and, and it's much easier and quicker for us to identify that. We can also now quantify the area We can also now quantify the area of each of the zoning districts. Before, we, we, you know, wouldn't be able to tell you how many acres are in the general business zone. But now, um, we'll be able to do that with this type, type of map. Um, in addition, other layers that we'd be able to throw onto the zoning map are, um, a layer show the buildings in town, wetlands and waterways. So, uh, to summarize, we believe that this is gonna be a, a good step forward for the town. It'll make it easier for, um, the staff people to work with the maps. And it's gonna be a lot easier for those professionals that, that work with zoning maps, engineers, surveyors, um, and appraisers that frequently have to check on what the zoning is of a particular property. It's gonna be online and available to everyone and quicker and easier to use. So, um, that's all I have for this particular presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Open it up to the board for questions from Mr. Alkeodas. Anyone?
Yeah, Paul, um, I just, if, if looking at that map, if everything goes well at town meeting with the new highway business district, it's already outdated. I mean, is it, is it an easy change to go in and, and reconfigure it?
So I'm glad, I'm glad you brought this up because, um, we, uh, took proactive steps to prevent this from happening, from it being outdated. The order of the articles on the warrant put this particular article first in the lineup. So this is article eleven, and the idea was first we adopt the new zoning map. Then there are two other articles that are gonna change this new map. Um, one, as we know, is, is the Boston Province Highway District. Um, that will, uh, be, well, it'll be a, a new zoning district and it will, um, amend the map. And the, and the second is the Medical Services Overway District around the hospital property. These district boundaries, the, the, um, are already there. They're already in the map. They're already done. And the layers that just are gonna need to be turned on once, um, these are all approved by voters in the Attorney General's office. So by putting this one first, the idea was, okay, first we're gonna adopt our new zoning map. And then when we get to the subsequent articles, Article twelve, which is the Route One, uh, amendment, that will amend this new, brand-new map. And we already have it all mapped out because when we gave it to Ted Brovitz, our consultant, didn't make any sense to have him making amendments to the old, old map. It made sense to have those amendments show up on the new one. So that's what we have. And then when we get to the, uh, the hospital, the Medical Services Overway District, that, those boundaries are already on those maps. You've already seen them during our discussions during our last hearings. So we have kind of preemptively avoided having any kind of confusion like that. The subsequent articles will amend the new map.
Thank you, Paul. Are there any other questions from members of the board? Is there any out, anyone out there in the public that would like to, uh, add to the meeting? I see none. Okay, I'm open for a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
And a second, please.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. For the roll, Mr. Hatchi?
Aye.
Mr. Shan?
Aye.
Mr. Petrikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
And the chairman is an aye, five zero. Closing the minutes, uh, closing the meeting. Now, I need a motion to approve the adoption of the zoning map for town meeting. I'm gonna make that motion, please. Mr. Shan, thank you.
Motion to make a positive recommendation to town meeting on this and accept it, this article.
And I have a second.
Second.
And Mr. Hatchi for a second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Unanimous. For the roll, Mr. Petrikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shan?
Aye.
Mr. Hatchi?
Aye.
Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
And the chairman is an aye, five zero. Thank you. And the hour of seven thirty-five is now upon us. We have a public hearing for an article for the February fourth, twenty twenty-one special town meeting, the Route One rezoning, amendments to the zoning bylaw in the following sections, two-point-zero districts, three-point-zero use regulations, four-point-zero dimensional requirements, six-point-zero regu- general regulations, seven-point-zero special regulations, and nine-point-zero special district regulations. That being said, Mr. Alkeodas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, back in two thousand nineteen, we applied for, uh, a state planning grant and received thirty-six thousand dollars from the state. We, uh, used those funds to hire a planning consultant to work with us on studying the Route One corridor and making recommended changes to the zoning bylaw and the zoning map. Uh, we hired, uh, consultant Ted Brovitz, and we've been working with him for, uh, about a year and a half on that. Uh, as you know, uh, Route One is a four-mile section of road in Norwood. Currently, there are four different zoning districts along that, uh, that four-mile stretch of road. Highway business, manufacturing, limited manufacturing, and general residence. Each of those four zoning districts has its own separate requirements for building height, minimum lot size, setbacks, um, and frontage. So it didn't really make a lot of sense to have these four different districts in a four-mile stretch of the road that looks pretty much the same from one end to the other as a, a commercial corridor. As part of this project, uh, Pat and I, working with the consultant, identified what some of the, we thought the existing problems were along the corridor that could, um, could be addressed and, and we could hopefully improve upon. These, these problems included large signs, both billboards and tall signs like the Newbury Comic Sign. That thing, i- it looks like it should be at the side of a, an interstate highway, not along, um, uh, not along Route One. Sections of the road don't have any sidewalks, so there's poor pedestrian access. Um, some parts of the road, you know, look nice and there's businesses with nice landscaping, four points. Um, but other parts of the road are unattractive and they look like, um, you know, an urban commercial corridor you could find anywhere. Um, there are businesses that are, that are encroaching on the road, that, that are off their property and into the state right of way. And they're parking cars and they're storing cars and fixing cars and selling cars from the state right of way. And that was identified but, uh, as a problem. When we went through the, uh, municipal vulnerability preparedness process, Route One was identified as one of two hotspots in the town for that urban heat sink effect. The whole corridor was, was red, was hot in the downtown area from, uh, this is caused mostly from impervious surfaces, identified as kind of hotspots. So this article, um, as the chairman mentioned earlier, it changes several different sections of the zoning bylaw. It changes section two, section two point, uh, one establishment of districts, section two point three, the zoning map, um, section three, the use regulations, the table of use regulations, and section three point one point five, section three point one six, the notes to the table use regulations, and, um, section four dimensional requirements. The reason why it, it affects so many different sections of the bylaw is we were creating this new Boston Province Highway District, but it didn't make any sense to, uh, to create separate parking regulations or separate sign regulations um, just for, uh, the Route One corridor. So we, uh, we are going into those existing sections of the zoning bylaw and making some minor adjustments, um, as part of this overall bylaw amendment. Um, you know, th- this will affect parking requirements, signs, buffers, landscaping and screening. Um, and it will incorporate, uh, the mixed-use overlay district, which was approved at town meeting a couple of years ago, um, in the downtown. It will allow for mixed-use development. And by what I mean is a, a mix of, uh, commercial on the first floor and residential above. It will allow for that in three areas of, uh, the Route One corridor. The first being up, uh, in the northern area, uh, near Everett Street, the analog device property, that area would be allowed for mixed-use development. Uh, an area right near on, on the Pontus Street, right adjacent to the traffic circle. And the third area is down, um, along, uh, Vanderbilt Business Park, along the frontage there. I'm not gonna get into all of the details of, um, this particular article because there really is some important new developments that just happened over the weekend, um, oh, the end of last week. So I want everyone to kind of pay attention because this is all gonna be new information. Um, at our last meeting, I mentioned to you that the state had, uh, approved the, um, in the economic development bond bill. And as part of this two-hundred-page piece of legislation, it included amendments to the State Zoning Act, chapter forty-eight. At our last meeting, we talked about some of the changes that we had heard about it. And we've been trying to, um, analyze and understand the changes to the State Zoning Act and what those implications are since, since it came out, um, a couple of weeks ago. Um, I contacted, uh, so I, I read an article on Friday from the Mass Municipal Association. And the article wasn't really specific about all the changes in, in the zoning act. But what really caught my eye as a red flag was it said, "Some of these changes will go into effect immediately." I've been doing this for like thirty-five years. I've never heard of a, a change to the state zoning law that went into effect immediately. Usually when the governor does that, it's because of this, some kind of eminent, uh, public safety concern, um, something very serious. But, um, zoning doesn't usually ever rest to the occasion of, "We have to put this in place immediately." Well, that, um, that really, uh, caught my attention. And I contacted Town Council Dave DeLuca and asked him, "Well, what sections of this law are currently in effect that went into effect immediately?" Um, council reviewed the, the, the statute and, um, sent me a highlighted version. And what we found out on Friday afternoon was that, um, what is in effect immediately is if there is a proposed amendment to, um, a zoning bylaw or ordinance that involves affordable housing, multifamily housing, or mixed-use development, that the voting threshold for those types of zoning amendments is lowered from the two-thirds majority vote that has been required for all zoning amendments since the, you know, the nineteen fifties. Um, that, uh, voting requirement is reduced to a simple majority if it involves affordable housing, multifamily, or mixed-use. After hearing that, I went back through the bylaw amendment. And of the, I think we have six different sections of the bylaw that we're changing. The ones I mentioned a few minutes ago, signs, parking, you know, um, landscaping. Of those six sections of the bylaw, there are four sections that reference the mixed-use overlay district, that, that reference, um, allowing for mixed-use. And that's in, in, um, the use regulations, the table of dimensional regulations, section nine point four, the mixed-use overlay district, and the zoning map are all being changed. Those sections in the zoning map, and those changes involve multifamily housing, mixed-use, and affordable. So, we followed up, um, I looked at the law over the weekend and, um, I had a conversation with Town Council Dave DeLuca today. And what we both understand, what we're gonna need to do, and this is gonna be confusing at town meeting. This particular article, Article twelve, is gonna have to be broken up by section. And there are gonna have to be individual votes on each of those six sections of this zoning amendment. Those sections that don't involve housing will be the standard two-thirds vote, um, that we're used to. However, once we hit a section that involves, um, multifamily housing or mixed-use, it's gonna require a separate vote by simple majority. This causes, this will cause confusion. And, and Pat and I are gonna work on getting the message out and explaining this between now and town meeting. Um, we had a meeting with, um, a, a pre-town meeting this afternoon. And, um, this was discussed briefly, and it was followed by a follow-up meeting with moderator Dave Hearn, Dave DeLuca, and, um, Mike Riley, the second moderator that stands in on articles that Dave Hearn, um, wants to recuse himself on. So unfortunately, this is one of those articles that, uh, that Dave Hearn is gonna be stepping down. And Mike Riley will be handling, uh, moderating this article. So we've had a discussion and explained that to, uh, um, to Mike and, and, and Dave Hearn. And, uh, Dave DeLuca and I are going to be working on the individual motions that are gonna have to be made for, um, for all of our zoning articles. And in particular, this one is gonna have to, I think, be up to six separate motions because of, um, the, the change in state law to the voting requirements. That was a lot to throw at you, and I wanna pause and see if any of the board members have any questions for me.
I do, Paul. So, taken as a whole, the entire amendment, I mean, the entire zoning amendment, as it stands yesterday before this all, oh, last week, as it all came down, we would have taken one vote on the whole package, correct? Which would have been a two-thirds, any zoning, any zoning amendment is two-thirds.
Yeah.
Now, because there's the housing component in there, wouldn't it still, wouldn't we just take the whole amendment as, maybe I missed something? Wouldn't we take still the whole amendment because it now it, it has housing and mixed-use in it? And, and just vote on the whole thing, but as a, a simple majority? I don't get why we're breaking it up into the, maybe I missed the, 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 the correlation.
So the change-
Mixed-use in it, so the whole thing should go as a simple majority now?
The changes to the zoning act are, are, are pretty specific, and it says, you know, any article that, that a- affects housing or mixed-use has to be the, the simple majority. So this was what, exactly what we discussed with council today. And, and where we all, uh, landed was that we're gonna have to take these separate votes. Um, there, as I said, it's gonna be confusing, and we're gonna have to explain this to the voters. The other side of it is that, um, the housing component was what I believe to be the most controversial part of the Route One rezoning. And, and we'd had a number of discussions on, on where these overlay, uh, districts should be located for housing. How big should they be? We started with, with allowing it along the whole corridor. Then we, we went from like four to five, and, and later with three. So by lowering that voting threshold to a simple majority for the most controversial elements of this bylaw amendment, I'm hoping that it, it, it will increase the odds that it'll be approved by the voters.
I, I'm sure it will. I guess, I just, I just don't see that where the, and, and it is what it is, and, you know, you guys under- understand it better than I do. Where the mixed-use and the housing is part of the amendment, they're asking us to take one amendment now, breaking it up into six portions, six different amendments. So, you know, the part of landscaping and parking and all parking garages, two-thirds majority. The mixed-use element now is a separate element, simple majority. And, you know, um, I, I, I just don't know why it wouldn't all be thrown, because the housing is in there. It wouldn't all be simple majority, I guess, is, I, I just, not a lawyer, I guess.
I'll, I'll talk to council. I'll talk to Dave DeLuca about it. Say, you know, we discussed it at the planning board meeting and, and this question came up. And, and can we take the simpler approach?
Yeah, I mean, I, like I said, I'm sure, I'm sure, you know, Dave's got it down pat and everything. It's just maybe, you know, I, I gotta understand why we're, why we have to break it up and we couldn't do the whole thing as a simple majority.
Mr. Shan?
I think that the state was not giving you the ability to drop everything to the, down to the simple majority. I think those portions that deal with, like, you know, parking garages or other types of businesses, that was always a two-thirds. So then, just because there's some housing in there, I don't think they would allow us to take the whole thing and just say, okay, just just a simple majority over everything. That's the way I seem to understand what Paul's been saying.
I'll follow up on that one with council. And as I said, this just over the last couple of business days, workdays, has started to unfold. It may be that the section that changes the parking requirements, that might need to be a simple majority too, because those parking requirements are specific for the mixed use overlay district. So I'm going to drill into this a little deeper with council and make sure that we're on the right track. We don't want to make a mistake and have the Attorney General throw out this amendment. So we want to make sure that we're following the right course of action, and we'll talk to some other people about it as well.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else have any questions at this time? Okay. Do we want to have any further discussion on this? Paul, do you have any questions? Joe, Ernie, anything? Brian, Rob? Okay. Get a motion to, do we want to get a motion tonight, Paul, just in case?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, or if there's anybody out there in the public, I'm not sure.
Okay. Anybody out there in the public that would like to speak on this article? Hearing none?
Okay, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Unanimous. It's, for the record, Mr. Hatchey?
Aye.
Mr. Shan?
Aye.
Mr. Pat Chakowsky?
Aye.
Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
And the chairman's an aye, five zero. Okay. Public hearing is closed. I need a motion to move a favorable recommendation to town meeting regarding these sections in the bylaw for an article for the February 21 special town meeting for the Route One rezoning amendments to the zoning bylaw in the following sections, 2.0 districts, 3.0 use regulations, 4.0 dimensional requirements, 6.0 general regulations, 7.0 special regulations, and 9.0 special district regulations. Mr. Shan?
Still moved?
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Bamber for a second. I have a motion and a second. Anyone else, any questions? Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Mr. Hatch, for the roll.
Aye.
Mr. Shan?
Aye.
Mr. Pat Chakowsky?
Aye.
Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
And the chairman is aye, five zero. Our 7:45 is now upon us. We have a public hearing, article for February 4th, 2021, special town meeting, zoning bylaw amendment to section 3.1.5, table of use regulations, table G, wholesale business and storage, 3A, open lot storage for motor vehicles. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Al Kiotis?
Chairman?
Again?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Did I make a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing notice?
Yes, checked. We'll waive them, reading of the minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. DeShane's is going to handle this one.
All right. So, so as we all know, open lot storage of vehicles is a issue, certainly fairly unique to Norwood with, you know, the auto industry being so prevalent on Route One. In going back and trying to find a solution to try to both come to a middle ground between auto dealers, and then obviously if the town is in interest in preserving land that was designated as manufacturing for more manufacturing uses. We've come up with a solution to try to consolidate open lot storage of motor vehicles solely along the Boston Providence Highway District. As well as kind of fine tuning that with a footnote as we, as we agreed to a few weekends ago from the help of Slechman Hajar and Mr. Al Kiotis, which they, but notes you basically have open lot storage allowed within the Boston Providence Highway District. However, for properties that are within Vanderbilt's industrial park, between Park Place and River Ridge Road, there must be property frontage in a minimum width of 100 feet along Boston Providence Highway. So obviously, we want to allow for open lot storage within the Boston Providence Highway District. But we're aware that, you know, the Vanderbilt Park area is certainly a unique section of Route One. And we don't want to overly expand open lot storage to some of those properties there, which could be for a better use. And certainly, a lot of incubator businesses down there, a lot of unique small businesses that are within the Vanderbilt Park. So we want to make sure we preserve that, but still allow for open lot storage within frontage along Route One.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. DeShane? Okay. Mr. Al Kiotis, anything to add on your side, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the public that's out there that would like to ask any questions or add something into this meeting? Hearing none? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Still moved?
And a second?
Second.
And a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, all opposed, unanimous. Okay, for the roll, Mr. Henchy, Mr. Hatchey, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Mr. Shan?
Aye.
Mr. Pat Chakowsky?
Aye.
Bamber?
Mr. Aye.
And the chairman is an aye, five zero, close the public hearing. Now I need a motion to accept and remove a favorable response to town meeting for the most, for the article we just reviewed. I have a motion.
Still moved?
Mr. Shan, thank you. And a second?
Second.
And a second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, for the roll. Mr. Hatchey?
Aye.
Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
Mr. Pat Chakowsky?
Aye.
Mr. Shan?
Aye.
And the chairman is an aye, five zero. Thank you. We've got another public hearing. The hour of 7:45 has come and gone. And we have public hearing for February 4th, 2020, special town meeting zoning bylaw amendment to section 3.1.5, I'm sorry, that's what we just did. At 7:55, public hearing, article for February 4th, 2021, special town meeting, zoning bylaw amendment to create the following new section, 9.9, medical services overlay district, MSOD, medical services overlay district. Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you like to make a motion to waive the reading of the notice?
Make a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing notice for medical service overlay districts.
And I got a second?
So I got.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Al Kiotis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all know, on June 28th, a severe thunderstorm hit Norwood and caused widespread flooding, hail, wind damage. Norwood Hospital was severely flooded to the point where it closed and it remains closed. In an effort to help the hospital overcome any regulatory barriers to rebuilding, we were asked by the general manager to write a zoning bylaw amendment that would help to better accommodate for the redevelopment of the hospital property. Currently, we don't know whether the hospital is going to repair and renovate the existing buildings, whether to do that with some buildings, but not all of them, or whether they're going to clear all the buildings on the hospital campus and rebuild. What we know is that the property is zoned general business. The maximum height in that district is 30 feet. Over the years, the existing hospital building is 60 or 70 feet. And over the years, the hospital has had to get many special permits and veriances from the zoning board to allow for the hospital to grow because, you know, it's like a pre-existing non-conforming situation in several different respects. The bylaw amendment that we're discussing tonight was drafted again by consultant Ted Brovitz. And Pat and I worked with Ted on creating a new medical services overlay district, which was specifically done to assist the hospital in the event that they want to redevelop so that they wouldn't hit any regulatory barriers like building height. Hospitals are pretty unique. They have things like heliports and parking garages that we don't have, very many of it all in town. Many communities that have hospitals have these medical service overlay districts. South Shore Hospital in Weymouth has one. And there's one in Needham for Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital. And so it's not uncommon for communities to create special zoning regulations to allow for a campus-type setting for delivery of a wide range of medical services and support services. Things like imaging centers, restaurants are all part of what we see around hospitals. And so we wanted to make it easier for all of these types of supporting facilities to be able to grow in the area of the block of the hospital. And this overlay district does cross over the street, cross over East Hoyle Street and bring in two additional underutilized properties across the street. The map that Pat's bringing up now identifies with the Red Hatch, the area of the proposed overlay district. We think that this will be a big benefit to the town and the hospital. Should they move forward in either direction, this will probably help to allow that. It caps the it caps the building height at and for hospital building itself, it allows the hospital primary structure to be up to 80 feet tall. Buildings up to, excuse me, buildings up to 45 feet are allowed in this district, except for the hospital, which can be 80 feet. So we believe that this is a good step forward for the town and for the hospital. This will make it safe and easier, convenient to access the site in a campus-type setting. I'd be glad to answer any questions that the board might have about this article.
Mr. Shan?
I, this is just sort of related. We have no information as of yet on the hospital. I just, we've been waiting, but we, there is no news as far as we know, right?
There is no news that I have. I did send this bylaw amendment to the president of the hospital about a month ago, looking for some feedback, and I didn't get any response.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, thank you. I just want to bring something up for the record, and I guess some feedback from the board. I've spoken to Paul and reached out to Attorney DeLuca about this. But I'm an attorney in private practice, and a substantial part of my practice is representing Stewart Healthcare. Nothing that has anything to do with Norwood Hospital, nothing that has to do with their facilities management or real estate or anything that would be impacted or impact the rebuilding of the hospital property. But I just wanted to disclose that. And I am prepared to abstain from any further votes on the medical overlay district if need be. I did see, I saw a written advisory opinion from the State Ethics Commission. And they did not see a direct conflict, although they suggested I file some sort of disclosure form with the town clerk, which I have not yet done. I just wanted to state that for the record.
Thank you, Brian. Pat, can I ask you to bring up that map again, please? Can you bring it up a little bit further to the top? Up a little here? The reason why I'm asking, Pat, I don't see the hatch marks on the post office area there.
Well, it is as far as the map goes.
Oh.
It is on the post office parcel.
It is on there?
Yeah.
Hatch marks?
Yes.
Okay, so covers that whole, the whole area, hang on.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have a question or any questions? Mr. Bamber?
Just, just as a reminder, what's the current underlaying districts?
General business. So any uses that are currently allowed in the general business will, you know, not be, will be unchanged or affected by this since it's an overlay.
Hey, anybody else? Mr. Shan?
Yes, on the East Hoyle Street side, that parcel there, that large parcel, the height, are there different height restrictions there compared to where the main hospital is now? Are there any differences?
So right now, in the general business zone, which all of these properties are GB, the max height is 30 feet. With this overlay district, buildings can be 45 feet, except for the hospital can be taller, up to 80 feet.
Okay, so if the hospital were to expand over there, would that, we don't, I guess at first glance, I wouldn't expect that. But I'm just wondering if they said, oh yeah, we can use that for patients, and it would be just like, you know, part of the hospital. Would, or are we saying no, no to that side of the street?
They could do any of the uses that are allowed in the medical service overlay district or in the general business district. And across the street, across East Hoyle, they could be up to 45 feet. But the bylaw, I think, makes it clear that it's going to be the principal hospital structure that can go up to 80 feet. And I want to remind everybody that they cannot build an 80-foot building And I want to um um remind everybody that uh they cannot build an eighty-foot building right up against the curb, that there are uh step back provisions similar to what was approved um in the downtown Mixu Sowaway District. So to get to that eighty feet of height, they they've got to be back like, I think, eighty feet. They've got to be back a ways to get to that height.
And I I think in everyone's mind, I mean, just looking at it in my mind, that that would be uh not the main building certainly and would probably we would think maybe used for some other purpose, uh whether it be, maybe it's parking, maybe it is some doctors' offices, I don't know. But um I just wanted to make sure that it's not going to be the the same height in a- as the hospital. It can't, it can't go as tall as the main, where the main hospital is now.
Paul or or Patrick, what's in the general business? I've got my uh book in front of me. What's the height? Uh, maximum height in the general business district? Forty-five?
Thirty.
Okay, so so if it's thirty in the general business, but we're going to allow forty-five in the medical, right? In the medical overlay? So Patrick, if you, on that map, if you don't have to bring it back up anyway, I'm I'm looking at that parking lot uh that um across East Hoyle uh that abuts the railroad tracks. There's a big parcel back there that the hospital runs from parking. All right, so Paul, just devil's advocate here. Owner of that property says, okay, uh I'm gonna put uh residential uh use in there, a mixed use, or I'm gonna put a meatball factory there. So they're not gonna take advantage of the medical use overlay. They're gonna revert back to the general business. That height requirement goes back to thirty feet and not forty-five, correct? Or is there, are they allowed to go to forty-five?
I think any buildings within that overlay can be up to forty-five feet high.
No matter the use, as long as it's allowed by one of the two districts.
Yeah, um, but the step back requirements apply to everything, not just the hospital.
Okay.
Thing. That sound right, Pat?
I think that sounds right to me.
So they get a little bump and then if they wanted to do something, they could go to forty-five as long as they're within that, even though it's not a medical use.
Yeah.
Okay.
But like you say, with that eighty-foot setback, it's getting them closer to the to the railroad tracks, so it's not leaving them a lot of frontage or a lot of depth, rather, excuse me, to the track.
I'm thinking of that parking lot. Yeah, they can't go to eighty there. They can go to forty-five, though, on that parking lot with the setbacks.
Yep. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Is there anyone out there from the public that would like to add to this meeting? Okay. I hear none. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Mr. Sheen.
So moved.
Thank you. And may I get a second?
So I got.
And Ernie has a second. I got a first, I got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Five zero. Now may I get a motion to recommend a favorable recommendation to town meeting on February fourth twenty twenty-one. Mr. Sheen.
So moved.
And a second?
So I got.
And I got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. For the roll. Mr. Hatchey.
I'm, I believe I should abstain.
Okay, I apologize for that. Mr. Sheen.
Hi.
Mr. Pat Chakovsky.
Aye.
Mr. Bamber.
Aye.
Mr. Mason.
Aye.
And the chairman's an eye, five zero. Thank you. Okay. What do we have? Next item on the agenda. So I plan. Endorsement, we took care of that, right? That was at the office, Pat?
Now, we have a continued public hearing for the um violation of conditions of approval of the definitive subdivision plan at Upland Woods.
Oh, okay. And for that, we have representative from Alexandria.
Here, John Pauly.
Mr. Pauly.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And we have Dan DiMarco from Campanelli.
As well, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Helkiotis, you want to bring us up to speed, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, well, I'm happy to report that um we are making progress. Um, Campanelli and Alexandria are making pro- progress moving forward with the design for the signalization of Planning Fields Road and and Upland Road. Um, they're in the process of kind of transferring officially the responsibility of uh doing that work from Campanelli to Alexandria and um uh following up with MassDOT and um uh notifying them of who will be involved with with kind of managing this project. Uh, when we had our hearing last fall, um, they presented a letter dated October twelfth that they had sent to MassDOT answering questions that that MassDOT had about uh these permit requirements. And um that letter laid out uh what I just explained that Campanelli um is is pulling away. They don't really own much real estate left there. Um, and Alexandria has stepped up um and is uh um a a holder of a a couple of parcels there and they have agreed to uh pay for the cost of um designing and signalizing that intersection. So I received a a second letter today addressed to MassDOT where um from uh John Pauly, where he's indicating that um they will be taking over and will be acting as the agent um to complete the project. Um, we called for um this public hearing last fall because we we weren't feeling confident that that Campanelli was going to move forward expeditiously to get this project completed. And um we have continued to kind of work with them and with Alexandria and it it now looks like we're in pretty good shape to uh resolve this issue. Um, we're confident that that these two companies have uh committed to us, that they will get this work done and they have uh this work under contract with VHB right now. Based on that, I'm going to recommend um that the board uh vote to close the public hearing. I'd be glad to answer questions and I'm sure Mr. Pauly and Mr. DiMarco will be available to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Does anyone up from the board have any questions for Mr. DiMarco or Mr. Pauly at this time? You're not gonna let him off that easy, are you? Thank you. Mr. Pauly and Mr. DiMarco, is there anything you would like to add?
Um, just as an update for um the 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 planning department and of course the planning board and yourself, Mr. Chairman. Um, we've got the twenty-five percent design documents in our possession. Um, talking to VHB, um, we should receive the fifty percent uh draft document this week. We're expecting midweek. Uh, we'll take a quick one or two days just to turn it around and with the expectation of being able to deliver the uh the documents that we can submit to Mass DOT and to the town by this week, which I believe meets the timeline right now, because I know there is some continuity going on with the Prospect Street project as well. Um, so we're we're working with the the planning department um to try to make sure that we're supporting both projects in a timely manner um in regards to submittals and whatnot. So uh I I think we're in good shape. I think we'll continue that due diligence and to go forward uh quite successfully.
Thank you, Mr. Pauly. Mr. DiMarco.
I I I just support what John said. Uh, I'm glad we got the plans at this stage and we work things out with the DOT and the town. Uh, appreciate it and uh although uh Campanelli um is done with that project, we would very much like to work with Norwood in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions? If there are none, is there anyone out there from the public that has any questions regarding this public hearing? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Sheen.
I just have a question on that. Should we be continuing or closing? I'm gonna throw that out there.
I think that uh we initially called the hearing because there were concerns that that Campanelli was not going to step up and and um honor their commitment to uh to build this intersection, the the signal. Um, we now have uh enough evidence and movement forward that I'm satisfied that uh that that is going to happen. And so I'm going to recommend that we close this matter and have the board vote to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion then to uh on the recommendation of uh the town planners and town council that they're satisfied with the way things are moving. Uh, they're the experts in this, so I'll make the motion that uh we follow their lead and we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you. Do I get a second on that, please? Thank you. We got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. For the roll. Mr. Pat Chakovsky.
Aye.
Mr. Sheen.
Hi.
Mr. Hatchey.
Aye.
Mr. Bamber.
Aye.
And the chairman has an eye, five zero. Thank you. Close the public hearing?
Thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Helkiotis.
So, um if one has a as a few administrative things that need to be taken care of. Um, one item uh did not make it on the agenda, but but I think the board can can still move forward. Um, the uh case with the Westwood Planning Board um uh appealing the planning board's approval of the site plan for Amazon, that case has been dismissed and um um the plans are ready to be signed. And so um we forgot to add that on to the agenda, but I wanted to see if the board could um could vote to uh to to sign the plans and then to stop by the office and and sign them. Um, similar situation um with Big Y. Um, the appeal period is over. We've received the final plans and um the board needs to to sign those plans as well. So there's two sets of site plans that need to be um approved, that need to be signed off by the board um when you can uh find some time to stop by the office and do that.
Patrick, can you leave them out and this Friday too late? Because that's when the only day I can get this done all.
No, that's that's fine. I can have everything out.
Patrick, how about Thursday, too? Are you there Thursday?
Yep.
Patrick, I'll text you. I'll text Thursday or Friday.
Yep. Yeah, whatever works, works better for everyone.
Thanks.
Yep.
So the the endorsement of the plans is is a kind of an administrative minister, ministerial act that does not really need to be voted to sign these plans. So um I think we can leave it at that. If the board um um can stop by during the week and sign off on those um sometime this week and then we'll be able to hand them off to uh to the applicant so that the projects can go forward. All right, I just um, the last thing I wanted to do tonight was to just um again kind of um um discuss preparing for the special town meeting on February fourth. Um, I'm going to have uh motions ready for uh Ernie and Joe. They are our two board members that are town meeting members. And in order to make a motion, you have to actually be a town meeting member. So um traditionally, um, I'm usually catching up with them right at town meeting before it starts to sign off on these. We're gonna need to um get ahead of that this year. Um, I may, you know, whatever it takes, I may be coming to uh to to have, drop these things off to have you guys sign um this weekend if we need to. But one way or the other, I'm gonna be um sending you these um draft motions uh after town council has completed them. Um, then, Mr. Chairman, your role in town meeting is to deliver the report of the planning board. We're gonna have these reports completed um tomorrow and we'll email those to you to take a look at. And um we're gonna need to have you at at uh at a town meeting uh attend to be able to read the for the planning board. Once you've read the report of the planning board, um that the board, you know, voted to support all of these articles, then um Ernie can uh can get up at bat and uh and make the motions. Um, so I will be in touch with you guys um during the week to make sure that we've got everything in place without any surprises for uh next week.
Paul, will uh Ted Brovitz uh be available at town meeting?
Ted is gonna be with us at town meeting. We also have a um uh a a town meeting informational session scheduled for Thursday at seven PM. We've already done this twice. I, we did in our own informational session, I think, last October. And then after we were done with that, Tony Mazuko said that he was gonna do a separate one for all of the town meeting articles. And so we were um, we were present for that informational session. Uh, Thursday night is is kind of a redo of that where um I will probably do uh the PowerPoint presentations that we um have prepared for town meeting and be available to answer any questions. Um, I've pre-recorded all of the presentations and I need to go back and redo the one for Route One because uh it got a little complicated and I'm gonna have to explain um to the voters uh about the the changes in the voting. So um I'm scheduled to to record that. The NCM um was really good and they've worked with me, the manager at NCM um uh worked with me to over Zoom, do these PowerPoint presentations. So what people will see at home is similar to what we were doing um earlier this meeting, where Pat would put something up on the screen. Only the actual PowerPoint presentation will occupy the majority of people's screens and I'll be up in the corner kind of narrating through the presentation. Um, after these uh video recordings of these presentations are run, um then we'll be ready to answer any questions that uh that come up from town meeting members. So little different format this year. Lot different.
Any questions from anyone at this point?
Uh, Patrick or or Paul, I got the email on that Thursday night. Do we have to pre-register for that? Or if you're a town meeting member, you can get right in?
No, I think they, I think you have to pre-register and if anybody has any questions about that, let us know. Pat and I will provide you with the link. And again, it's gonna be using the Zoom platform, not go to meeting what we're, what And again, it's going to be using the Zoom platform, not go to meeting what we're using tonight. The town has already held two public information sessions to help people understand how town meeting is going to work, what Zoom is going to look like and how that functions. And I believe there's going to be one additional training session for anyone that wants to make sure that they understand how it's all going to work. There's also going to be like a hotline. So if somebody's having technical difficulties, they'll be able to call a number. And there'll be two or three members of the IT department standing by to help people that are having technical difficulties participating in town meeting. So we've had several pre-town meeting meetings to go over how it's going to work. What if somebody has a point of order? What if somebody has a question? How is the voting going to take place? And so we've been working with MAPC, our regional planning agency that was contracted to help run the town meeting. And they've been throwing out questions and we've been making decisions on how this is going to fall into place. So we, at this point, we think we're in pretty good shape. Since my presentations are going to be pre-recorded, somebody else is going to push the button, I think, and run those presentations. So all as I need to be prepared for is to answer questions. And we will have Pat and Ted Brovitz available to help answer any questions that may come up.
Thank you. Mr. Bamber, you had a question?
I was answered. Thank you. Okay.
Paul, do you anticipate through your pre-meetings, one night or two nights? I'm guessing two anyway, right?
Yeah, probably, it's probably going to be two. You saw how we just went through the public hearings. I was able to present these things in like five minutes. There's not really a lot to most of them. It's just the Route 1 that has the most detail and is the most complicated. And it's going to be further complicated by the change in state law, a change in the moderator. So we're just going to have to work through that as best we can. But we're going to try to get information out. Pat's going to make sure that all of the, our articles are on our website, all up to date and visible. So people that are interested can get that, get the articles from our webpage. One thing that was changed this year with the warrant that I'm really not happy about is that they seem to be very concerned about the length of the warrant. And so the entire articles were not published in the warrant. The Route 1 article is a summary, basically the yellow sheet summary of what the article does. But the full language of the article does not appear in the warrant. And as I'm looking at the warrant now, Article 16, the Medical Services Ovaly District, there's a summary that I wrote, but not the full language of the article. This is the first time this has been done. I've never seen it done before. And I have some concerns with it. And I feel that we will be opened to criticism for not having published the full text of these articles in the warrant. And I think that the voters deserve to be able to see all the detail and the full text of these articles. So I think we're going to need to have a conversation with the selectmen next year about this. Particularly if there's any kind of backlash. I don't, I, you know, they're trying to say ink and paper for the warrant. And to me, that's not really how I would recommend doing it. I like to make sure that the public has full access to all the language and can ask any questions about it. So I really don't, I'm not a big supporter of the approach that we're using this year. And I'd like to kind of revisit this before our next town meeting.
Is that online for someone to, the full text?
Yeah, and I explained to Pat this afternoon, the problem here is that this decision was made back in October. And that was when we thought, that was when we were having an in-person town meeting on November 11th. And so our intent was to put a summary of the article in the warrant. But then as people walked into town meeting, there'd be a handout with the full detail. Now that we've gone from an in-person town meeting in November to a virtual town meeting in February, people are not going to be able to pick up that stack of paper that they usually pick up as they walk into town meeting and get the detail of these articles and sit down in their chair and read them if they want. That's not going to be available to them. So the only way they're going to be able to access the full detail of all these articles is by the, our webpage, which Pat's now has up on the screen for everyone to see what it looks like. So for folks that want to see the full article and the detail, they're going to need to visit our website. This was further complicated by the fact that we've closed Town Hall down to the public again. And, you know, we stayed in the warrant. For full copies, you can go to the clerk's office or the planning department and pick up a full copy of these articles. Then Town Hall closed to the public. So I'm hoping that this is, doesn't become an issue at town meeting. But I wanted to highlight this for the board so you know what was going on. And I really think we should have a conversation about this before the next town meeting. And if the board feels strongly the way I do about this, that we need to give all of the detail to the voters in the warrant, we'll need to talk to the selectmen about that. This approach that we used was approved by town council and the moderator. It does provide notice to everyone. But I'm just, I don't want to be criticized and I don't want to be accused of trying to withhold information from people because of the decision that was made to keep the warrant short.
Yeah, I just want to walk through, obviously, to access the articles. They're saved in the Planning Board's page. So the Planning Board, not the Planning Department. You can go to Committees and Boards, right from the Town Page. Planning Board, I just got to make one more correction because that's obviously inaccurate. It's not Fall. It's February 4th. But right on the left-hand column and very, I guess, when you know, we know where to go, it's easy to find them. But obviously, sometimes our website can be a little bit a little bigger than you want it to be. So it is fairly easy to find on the Planning Board's page.
And we'll have a good, simple, easy to read map of the Route 1 corridor, what the, you know, the properties. So everybody can see a nice, easy locus of what we're talking about.
They'll be able to look at the articles and the maps that show those areas that are part of the district. But again, in a normal town meeting, we would have two poster boards with full-sized versions of these maps. So as people walked in, they'd be able to stop and look at them. So unfortunately, we are kind of at a disadvantage this year, given the circumstances of the pandemic. I'm just hoping that folks, you know, have some understanding and are patient with us.
Hey, anybody else have any questions? Paul, in regard to the chairman's proposing the articles, is that going to be virtual or is that going to be at a location for town meeting?
So it will likely be virtual. There will be a command center where some town officials will be at a building. And it's odd because like we were talking about this this afternoon, but nobody knew where the building, where we were going to be doing this. So the moderator, some town staff, the general manager, some selectmen will all be in a room together to handle any questions or issues that come up. It may be over like at the police station, community center. But Tony was not able to join us today, so we don't know exactly where that's going to be. And so Al, I would plan on you being teed up and ready to go to read those planning board reports from where you are right now to do it virtually.
Paul, on that point, to Al's point, would it be prudent if, when you give Al the recommendations to read, if you also sent Joe and I the also?
That's a good idea.
For whatever reason, one of us can't, you know, get on or, you know, how this technology works. So if, for in fact, Al can't get on, or I can't get on, or Joe can't get on, one of the rest of us have the recommendations?
We'll do that. And I was asked today whether I'll be, I'll be in Norwood, you know, like in the command center. And I told them that I would do whatever the general manager wants me to do. If you want me to come in, I'll be there. If not, I'll comfortably be right here at home.
That's good.
That, that's pretty much all I have. Any other questions tonight or discussion?
I'm good. Anybody?
Yeah, I would say that we got a letter this week from one of our planners. I don't know, is it, things public, Paul?
Is it about his cat?
Well, I think that we deny.
I took him up for a boat journey, right?
Yeah, you know, you came here, you're going to leave us a man. I don't.
And always shut off Route 1A, South Town.
Yeah.
Walpole, it's got to be Walpole, that letter.
Not Westwood, I mean.
Oh, I'd kill you.
Yeah, I, I, it's definitely bittersweet. You know, I've talked about this a lot with Paul. And it, Norwood is in a great town. And all of you are just phenomenal to work with. It's, obviously, my experience is pretty much Norwood and Worcester. I was, you know, I was in front of a computer, not talking to much people. So this has been in the past three years to kind of get the full experience of truly working for a town and working with boards and committees. You know, all, every one of you has just been, you know, amazing to work with. And it's, you know, it's definitely bittersweet. I mean, I, I'm excited for my next step in my career. But, you know, just, you know, working every day with Paul and with all of you and coming into, coming into, you know, 566 Washington Street. It's definitely going to be, it's definitely going to be different. But I am, you know, I am excited.
Yeah, go ahead, say it. No, that's okay, Patrick. You know, you had a great mentor here in town.
Yes.
Oh, he's been carrying you on his back for three plus years. And that's how you thank him. But that's okay. That's how life is.
Yeah, I can't wait to sit in one of those pocket packs in Walpole.
Don't let me do that in Walpole. I don't know.
We do wish you well, Patrick, because it's been a great experience, I hope, on your side as much as it has been for us. You've done a real professional job.
Yeah, no, thank you. It's been definitely, you know, and it's been a great experience and it's been just a very, very, very happy. Paul, Paul, right, you know, gave me that job three plus years ago and got me, you know, where I want to be in my career as a planner.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Congrats.
You're going to leave the cat or you're going to take that to Walpole?
Well, no, I saw our associate board member had a cat of his own. So I don't know, NC Ernie. You could comment on Derek's cat?
Yeah. She's a shy one.
Oh, great. Beautiful.
You hear the cameo?
Just beautiful.
Cameo. All right. Anybody, anything else? Anybody? Can I get them? Yes, Patrick?
I, I don't know if Paul, I want to mention this too. I just, obviously, this morning, we got really awful news at Town Hall about the passing of Bernie Cooper. And so that was just, that was just a punch to the gut coming to work this morning. You know, I've only known Bernie for three years. Obviously, Paul's known him for more. And most of you have known Bernie for decades. So it's, yeah, it's kind of indescribable. It's just awful.
Yeah, there's only one Bernie, I'll tell you.
Bernie, Bernie's the most dedicated public servant that I've ever met. His dedication, nights, weekends, fireworks, concerts. Bernie was always there to get the job done. And he was one of the nicest people that I know.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's true.
Yeah, he was, he did all the work that, the underlying work, you know, the insurance and the negotiations with, you know, HMOs and all that kind of stuff that no one really likes to do. But, you know, Bernie did it and, you know, God love him. He missed. Good, just one of the good guys.
A moment of silence, please? Thank you. If no one has anything further for this evening, I'd like a motion to close tonight's meeting.
Second?
And a second, please.
Second?
Okay, I got a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous? Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.
Good night.
Thank you.